For those not familiar with our role, the Calgary Police Commission is a body of community members appointed by city council to provide independent citizen governance and oversight of the Calgary Police Service on behalf of all Calgarians. To protect the political neutrality of the police, Alberta's Police Act outlines that the police chief reports directly to us, and we give direction to the Calgary Police Service through the chief, police policies, monitoring of the complaints process, and approval of how the police budget is spent. Today is one of eight public meetings we have each year to openly discuss police governance and oversight matters with the service's leadership and to hear from the public. In addition to these meetings, there are also private monthly committee meetings where commissioners dedicate time to work more directly with the service on various matters that cannot be discussed publicly. To open our meeting, I would like to acknowledge that this call is taking place on the traditional territory of the Nittis Tapi, made up of the Six Sika, Baguine and Kainai First Nations, the Urhe, Nakota First Nations comprised of the Chiniki, Bear Spaw and Wesley First Nations, and the Tucina First Nation. These are the people who made a treaty with the Crown, forming Treaty Seven Territory. The city of Calgary is also homeland to the historic Northwest Métis and to Métis Nation of Alberta Region Three. We are committed to doing our part to address the inequity and intergenerational trauma caused by past and current wrongs to support reconciliation with all Indigenous people in our community. The Calgary Police Commission also condemns racism and prejudice in all forms and is committed to being anti-racist. We stand in solidarity with our colleagues, families, and citizens who are Black, Indigenous, or people of color. For those of you joining us for the first time, allow me to provide a brief overview of the meeting format. The public session of this meeting is being recorded and will be posted on our website so we can make it available to those unable to attend. There will be several presentations from the Calgary Police Service, commission members, and commission staff. Commissioners will then have a chance to ask questions or make comments by raising their hands in Zoom. Once we've completed all the presentations, we'll move to the public participation portion of the meeting. Anyone who registered to speak before noon today will then be called on by name and will have up to three minutes to comment on any agenda items. Following the public participation portion, we will close the public portion of the meeting and ask the media and chief to remain on the line with me for a brief media availability. So to start our agenda items, I will now call for declarations of pecuniary interest or conflict of interest from the commissioners. Hearing no declarations, I will now ask for approval of the agenda. Does any member of the commission wish to request an amendment to the agenda? Hearing none, I will now ask for approval of the consent agenda. For those viewing today's meeting, the consent agenda is a list of routine items that all commissioners agree can be accepted without more discussion or a separate vote. Does any member of the commission wish to request an item on the consent agenda be brought forward for discussion? Hearing no such items, I declare both the agenda and the consent agenda approved as presented. Begin with, I'll present the chair's report. I would like to start by welcoming our two new citizen appointees, Pam Karnick and Jeffrey French. We're excited to have you join us to provide the unique insights and perspectives that you bring, both from your experience in business and your extensive volunteer work. December was a busy time for the commission as we worked hard to get our new commissioners up to speed and prepare for the coming year. In addition to our regular business, I was honored to be able to provide a year-end greeting and thank you to the members of Calgary Police Service on behalf of the commission. Several commissioners and I also had the opportunity to join the celebration of the chief's awards gala and graduation of the latest class of new officers. Congratulations to both the chief's award recipients and recent grads. The professionalism and policing excellence highlighted at these events is a source of pride for our city. On a sad note, I know, I know most commissioners joined with the service at the end of December to mark the one-year anniversary of the loss of Sergeant Andrew Harnett. Our hearts were and remain heavy for his family, friends, and colleagues. We will never forget his sacrifice. On behalf of the commission, I would also like to recognize some of the noteworthy achievements of the service since our last meeting. Fourteen members of the service's tactical team were among 150 officers recognized internationally for their high fitness level following the National Tactical Officers Association Personal Fitness Qualification Challenge. At the Alberta Association of Chiefs of Police, two other officers received awards, recognizing them for excellence in community policing and outstanding service. We were also pleased to see yesterday that the service was once again selected as one of Alberta's top 75 employers. And on another note, that the service, city of Calgary, and distress center will soon begin diverting appropriate 911 calls from people in crisis to 211. While we know there is still a lot of work to do around workplace concerns and alternative call response, these two successes show that the service is making good progress in these areas. On the investigative side, we saw significant change charges in interprovincial, online, and in-person drug trafficking networks. Pharmacy robberies and random stabbings occurred, and suspects were quickly identified and charged. And an in-home invasion that erroneously targeted innocent Calgarians was quickly and expertly handled. Additionally, the family of Jasmine Lovett and Aleah Sanderson and the Crown prosecutor in their homicide case praised the service this week for outstanding investigative work that led to the conviction of their murderer. The commission and Calgarians are grateful for the hard work and professionalism of the officers in each of these cases. Our community is safer because of you. Your dedication as this pandemic continues and you strive to maintain your work commitments while taking care of your families, supporting friends, and taking care of your own health is remarkable. As critical frontline workers, your work is hugely valuable, and we extend our thanks. Finally, I want to take a moment to acknowledge two important dates. Today is Bell's Let's Talk Day, a time when we reflect on mental health and encourage anyone needing help to reach out. We know that the pandemic, economic challenges, and other stressors have put a great strain not only on members of the police service, but also on Calgarians as a whole. I want to acknowledge this day and add our voice to say that mental health challenges are nothing to be ashamed of and that reaching out for help is always the right choice. As we head into the next month, I also want to acknowledge that February is Black History Month, and the theme in Canada this year is February and forever, celebrating Black History today and every day. The theme is an important reminder that honoring the diversity of our city involves much more than just marking special days or saying the right things. As a commission, we committed with the service and city council to be anti-racist in our approach to policing in Calgary and to actively work to correct the inequity and systemic racism that has marginalized so many people in our community. I want to encourage everyone to take time next month to learn about the incredible history of Black Canadians, but I also want to encourage everyone to reflect on the discrimination and racism that has sadly been a part of our history as a reminder of why the work we have undertaken to end racism is so important. We have made progress these last few years, but there is still much to do. I know that I speak for the entire commission when I say that we are fully committed to seeing this work through. That concludes my chair's report to the commission. I would like to now invite the Calgary Police Service to present us on the agenda items in section five. The first presentation is on service taking a victim-centered approach to sexual assault investigations. So over to the service. Please go ahead.
Thanks Chair, appreciate your comments here. Just before we move on, I just wanted to thank you for your acknowledgement of both the number of very happy events there and some very, very somber ones that occurred both in our service and our city. We just want to say thank you for doing that. We also join with you in welcoming Commissioners Karnick and Commissioner French to the Calgary Police Commission, obviously very civic-minded and talented individuals coming to the CPC, and so we look forward obviously to working with you as well. If you permit me just for a second, I just a couple of comments on a couple of the topics that you've raised. Thank you for your comments about Black History Month. We continue as a service to plan for Black History Month next month. We plan to honor and profile the month by profiling the experiences of members of the Black community who occupy roles within our service, both sworn and civilian. This was actually very well received last month or last year, and members were really actually struck when they got to hear their own people speak about their own experiences, not just in our organization, but in the profession of policing and in the city. And additionally, we plan to share some additional resources, you know, some book titles and some speaker series and these types of things will further complement the various Black History Month activities. So that's a really important piece. You mentioned the designation as Alberta Top 75 Employer. We feel very honored to be on that list again this year. As you know, it's the second year that we've made the list. And as a commission, you're keenly aware, we've been working very hard on human resource reforms with the ultimate vision of becoming the police employer of choice in the country. We join many recognizable employers from both the public and private sector who are judged on various objective criteria that include things like the physical workplace, health, financial, and family benefits, training and skills development, and impact and community involvement. And so while it's a real honor to be included on that list, we also would be the very first to acknowledge that we continue to work in support of our commitments to support our employees who in turn support our community, which is really very important. And while there is much work that remains to be done, it's really comforting to know that actually we're starting on a great, strong foundation and that as we continue to make change during a time when we seek to bring a number of new employees into the Calgary Police Service, it's, as I say, really good to know that we can retain many of the important benefits and features that exist now while also looking to other innovative employers across the province to help look at innovative practices, to chart our course going forward to what we know will be a very positive future. So I just wanted to make those couple of additional comments. I will move to the reports that you referred to. Five point one was the report on victim-centered approach to sexual assault investigations, and I'm just going to turn that to Deputy Chief Cook, who will introduce our presentation.
Thank you Chief, thank you Chair and Commissioners. We bring to you today, as the chief said, a victim-centered, trauma-informed approach to sexual assault investigations. We have with us today Staff Sergeant Michelle Doyle. Through her strong leadership and close partnerships with key community partners, Michelle will outline our approach to sexual assault investigations. I believe Michelle is online with us in another boardroom and is ready to present.
Thank you, sir, and thank you to the commission for having me today to speak about this important topic. Just wanted to ensure that my sound is working okay.
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, thank you. What I'll be speaking about today is how Calgary Police Sexual Assault Investigative Unit has utilized a victim-centered approach to how we investigate. We do know that sexual assault is one of the most under-reported crimes in Canada, and so this realization meant that policing had to shift how we deal with these investigations to ensure that we were giving the best service to our victims. Really what victim-centered means is that we're treating our victims with care, respect, and empathy, and we try to eliminate any barriers. So in the presentation today, I am going to be referring to victims that are over 18, and I'm going to use the term victim rather than survivor in the context of they are a victim of a criminal offense. Victim-centered investigation means that we are acknowledging a trauma-informed approach to our investigations. And to do this, it's an all-encompassing approach. In 2017, the Justice Canada did a study and determined why victims are reluctant to come forward, and often they are not believed or they feel they will not be believed. They don't have family support, or they may feel shame and embarrassment. So knowing this, we have to work towards eliminating those barriers. In 2020, what we did internally was roll out a provincial-wide training platform that helped educate our officers about trauma-informed approaches and what victim-led actually means when they're responding. By understanding what trauma-informed means, we can have a better approach in that we know trauma can impact the brain and the nervous system and how victims are articulating what's occurred to them. So it can impact the memory that they have, how they're recalling what occurred, how it's explained, and what order it comes to us. And that chronological disclosure in the past may have, you know, created a bit of a barrier in that we were looking for truthfulness, but now there's a greater understanding that the trauma can impact that. So being better informed and having our officers understand these things can help us improve those interactions. The training is rolled out a provincial joint partnership, and we were lucky enough to engage with experts in the field, including Dr. Sarah McDonald, who is associated with forensic interviewing through our Luna Child Advocacy Center, and also Dr. Kiara Makita from the University School of Medicine, the Coming School of Medicine, pardon me, who has great expertise in understanding how the impacts of language can impact our response also. Most police agencies within Alberta were also involved in the training, and it's been a great success so far. We've had wonderful feedback internally. A lot of the training did discuss myths and how rape myths or stereotypes that we may have impacted our understanding of sexual assault can impact the communication that we have with victims. So we have to be more aware of those biases that we might not be aware of. Additionally, the training reiterated that false reports are very, very rare. So we have to come into the investigation from a place of belief, and that can help victims feel more comfortable. The importance of education can't be understated. There's research that actually speaks to the importance of that first patrol responder, and if the victim senses at all that they are not believed or that they're being rushed, it can impact the investigation or the disclosure later on. The, the training also spoke to the attitude of the police officer. Again, so just addressing that we come from a place of belief. We want our patrol officers not to be necessarily trying to assess or investigate, just gather the information, and then when our specialty investigators are involved, we can actually sift through the information and determine what evidence is viable. Victim-led, sexual assault victims really do lead these investigations, and what that means is, is they have choices. So if a report is, has recently occurred, they have the option of obtaining strictly medical care. They can take the route of a police investigation and consent to a sexual assault evidence kit. Or their third option, and it is actually called third option, they can go to Sheldon Schumer, again, not have police involvement, but the sexual assault evidence kit can still be obtained, and it's kept on-site at the hospital until they release it to us. So that really gives them more of the power of the decision-making that can help make them feel like they are in control of what direction the investigation goes. Additionally, once we are involved in our, our unit with the specialty detectives, we are, we remain victim-led. So if at that time a victim has done a disclosure and decides not to proceed, the investigation will stop at that point until they are ready. So we explain to them there's no statute of limitations and that they can come back at any time and re-engage that investigation. We do know that there is a risk obviously of loss of evidence if that is the route. So there are times where we may need to secure evidence and have it on hand, but we would never pressure a victim to continue with an investigation if they were not ready to do so. There are occasional caveats where if there was someone at risk or there were safety issues, then we may still need to be involved. We did recently have a situation where a victim was very reluctant to proceed. There were some cultural issues. We were able to get the Calgary Immigrant Women's Association involved to support the victim to help understand what some Canadian laws are and what her rights were, someone that spoke her language. And once she had that support in place, she was more interested in proceeding with the investigation. Factors influencing experience, this is keeping in mind that everyone comes from a different place to us and essentially that we have to acknowledge they may have experienced prior trauma. Again, cultural factors may influence their experience, addictions or mental health. So just, you know, being aware of those again through our training that this can impact how they may communicate with us, frustration with the justice system, and just being extra patient when we're dealing with people. And at times that might be victims venting on us, and we certainly understand where that frustration can come from. And lastly, the supportive environment. This, this is not necessarily a new process, but Calgary Police has always offered supports. We have great partnerships that I'll just touch on in the next slide. But we do encourage victims, if they want to bring along a community partner or family friend, anyone that they wish to bring, which would support them, or if they would like us to bring in the trauma dogs as support, we do offer that when they come in for their disclosure. We have what we call a soft room, so it's, it's a more comfortable setting that doesn't resemble a police station. We are in investigative building, so it looks more like an office than a police station, trying to avoid any additional trauma to them. And if they feel more comfortable with a different gender, we do try to accommodate that, although we can't always. But if they do request, say, a female detective for disclosure, we do endeavor to accommodate that. And lastly, we do have court support, either through our own victim assistance or we have a partnership with Calgary Communities Against Sexual Abuse, and they have a court support program called PECs. A lot of the training involved the focus on language, and you may see this throughout some of our public media releases also, but we've changed our unit name last year instead of Sex Crimes to Sexual Assault Investigative Unit, and we no longer use terminology of sex kit or rape kit, sexual assault evidence kit. And investigative report in our language, or the language, we try to, we're trying to continue to educate officers about language such as we don't want to see alleged or claimed that kind of thing in our reports because it gives the impression that there's a lack of belief. And then lastly, we've changed the focus on our media release, learning again from our partnerships with UFC about the importance of how we communicate when we do articulate that we've laid charges. We don't offer specific safety tips because the onus is not on the victim. The onus is on the suspect or the accused to obtain consent. So we put our focus on educating about what consent actually is. We couldn't do this work without our partnerships, and we have some really dedicated people supporting us. Again, I mentioned CASA, our second partnership there, Communities Against Sexual Abuse. They offer online support and therapy through their counselors and the court support program. The Sexual Assault Response Team consists of a group of amazing nurses and physicians that meet with the victim at the hospital and go through the sexual assault evidence kit process with them. Calgary Police is also part of the Provincial Sexual Violence Police Advisory Committee. This consists of a number of government agencies in Alberta supporting victims of sexual violence. And internally, you may be aware of this committee that originated essentially out of the Unfounded Report and the Me Too Movement back in 2017. The Sexual Violence Advisory Committee is a group that reviews police reports to identify if there's any trends that might indicate bias or ways that we can improve, and they report back to, to me and ultimately if we need to report to the chief in order to make some changes, just to provide the best service that we can. So I think that summarizes our approach and how we're trying to address this topic, and if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Thank you very much. That was a very informative. I'll turn it over to Commissioners now and ask if there are questions you'd like to put forward. And I see Commissioner Campbell, please go ahead.
Thank you very much Chair. Thank you very much Ms. Doyle for that presentation. You're, you're very correct, language does matter. And there, I have a couple of questions with respect to the victim-centered sexual assault investigations. First, with respect to the sexual assault evidence kits, are there barriers to use of those kits in Calgary when you consider the full plurality of our population?
Are you asking specifically about including different genders and comfort level and that type of thing with the sexual assault evidence kit?
Just barriers in general. Is there a barrier with respect to cost, access? Is there a barrier when we think about sexual violence between members of the LGBTQ2+ community? Is there, is, are there, are there areas within the community where if you present at hospital, they may not actually have an evidence kit in, in inventory? The whole kit?
Excellent question. Actually, COVID has impacted our, I'm just going to call it SAIC for short, Sexual Assault Evidence Kit, just easier to say, just as there are swabs in the kits. So we have had to source the swabs from different locations, but we currently, we've never been in a position where we did not have access to kits available. We've worked with the RCMP and I've sourced some other providers in the event we were, you know, getting to a place we were short. So that, you know, certainly has been something new that we didn't anticipate would happen. As far as access, victims come into the Sheldon Schumer through the urgent care and then are put in touch with our Sexual Assault Response Team. And it's this team that really has all kinds of experience in making victims feel comfortable, no matter, you know, what situation they're presenting as. So cost, we haven't had any issues with cost. There certainly is a cost to the kit, and we also get billed from the physician. Third option kits are currently covered through the province. So right now we're in a position where, you know, that is not an issue.
Thank you very much. And my second question, and it is my last one. Trauma-informed approach. Um, trauma-informed approaches to care and investigations, um, I don't believe should overlook the critical impact of racism and racialized trauma on the victim and the victim's well-being. So how could you incorporate racial equity into the victim-centered sexual assault investigations? Particularly as we reexamine cases of missing and murdered Indigenous women and girls and considering the transgender community and in particular the recommendations from the Missing and Missed Report from the Toronto Police Services Board.
Excellent question, and I think this is an area that we have room to improve. Uh, I personally have been on this team since January of last year and I do see racialized communities um, are, have a greater reluctance, reluctance at time to proceed with the investigation. So I have brought this up at our provincial committee um, because I know they are developing supports um, for Indigenous communities in particular. What I would like to see uh, this year is that we have expansion of a partnership with an Indigenous support group within Calgary that we can uh, engage with them. When uh, I'll say, I'll say um, Indigenous women are difficult to locate or don't want to proceed because they've had poor experiences in the past. So how can we be better at supporting them and trying to create a better relationship moving forward? I also do see um, many of our victims are suffering from addiction or mental health issues. And uh, our investigators will go out looking for them. If we don't have point of contact to reach them, to try to verify if there is something we can do to support. So I would say this is an area that, you know, we really do need our community partners to help guide us to, to be better to support uh, our victims.
Thank you very much. Thank you for the questions and the good responses. Um, Commissioner North Pagan.
Uh, yes, I'm, I'm just gonna add off of what uh, Commissioner Campbell said there. Um, I, I do see, like, you know, again, we, we discussed the chicken before the egg, that we need to reach out to the community and get that consultation. On the other hand, we do have a path that's already been drawn out through the Missing and Murdered Indigenous Women and Girls Report. So there are recommendations in there that can give us a starting point as to how we need to engage with that population. Because yes, there, there is a huge issue here when it comes to the reporting, because that is a po- power structure that is ingrained within the society that, you know, that is not a good relationship. So, you know, i- it's already been defined within that report on how we need to proceed forward with this issue. We just not, we just have to be able to pick out which calls to action pertain to this specific area that we're discussing here. So yes, it's nice to have those community partners, but there are also things that we can start on, you know, on the basics, the foundations, because we have that research that's already been done across Canada. If there's a way we can figure out how to utilize that and, you know, that's going to benefit the, you know, this work. Um, I would like to see that I go forward. So that's the only thing I have to say about that. Thank you.
I agree with you. I think um, one of our challenges is, again, trying to balance encouraging uh, victims to continue with the investigation and also respecting their decision if they don't want to speak to us. So I think that's the area that I'm kind of looking for some guidance from our partnerships is if we do, when we do reach out, we receive a report, our investigative area does reach out and we are told they don't want to proceed. How far do we go to try and encourage involvement when we know that that can potentially cause a secondary trauma? So it's always balancing um, you know, the wishes of the victim in still respecting the history that may be preventing them from wanting to engage with us.
Thank you so much. And I'm gonna tell you, this is very important work, because this is lacking across Canada. And this is an area that I can see an opportunity to jumpstart on, especially with those, with that MMIWG report. We just have to be able to find a way to u- utilize it that's gonna benefit, you know, everybody in Calgary. Thank you.
Great, thank you. I just have um, two uh, other questions to add to those excellent questions. Um, one, uh, to, um, I wonder if you could give us just a bit of a context. You talked about training and, and some of these things, and I just wanted to get a feel for are these, um, how recent or how new are these efforts on one hand? So a context of timing. Um, and then going forward, we talked about you, you mentioned a couple of things that you're looking towards doing um, over the next little while. Um, are there other things that you would like to see, say, in the next year, several years, in terms of either expansion or continuation? Um, and sorry, there was, I had one other quick question in there, so I don't want to ask all three altogether. But I'm, I'm just curious of the training that you talked about, is that within that particular unit? Or what about the training that might be valuable for all service members together, just at the awareness level? So they have some of this information as well. So I guess the question is sort of, how long has this been going on? Where are you going in the future and, and just specifically around training? Um, how far does that get spread within the service?
So the training that rolled out last year uh, was service-wide training and it was called Trauma-Informed Sexual Assault Investigations. So it did speak about uh, the issues relating to communication, language, myths, that type of thing. So that has been delivered service-wide. Uh, everyone was to complete it by September of 2020. There's also meaning available that relates to Unfounded, the Unfounded Report and when Unfounded is utilized in a sexual assault report. And there's also a third training through CPKN that officers can do voluntarily that is just specifically on trauma and how that may present in investigations. I think, you know, this is an area, again, I um, we have a very high caseload. Uh, so we, I think we, you know, it's important we are effectively staffed so that we can serve our victims. But I think the area that I would like to move into, I know Edmonton Police is engaging with um, allowing victims to uh, smudge before a disclosure interview. Um, you know, there's different uh, research going on about potential off-site disclosure locations, but I, I think our approaches need to be research-driven. Um, and I think there's all kinds of things that we can do and achieve uh, this year and into next year to better serve our victims.
Thank you very much. And I see one more um, person with a question. Commissioner Siddiqui, please go ahead.
Thank you Chair. Uh, my apologies, Staff Sergeant, I had a work commitment, so I'm coming in at the end of your presentation. The question I had and, and you might have already answered this, is have you presented to the Anti-Racism External Group that Deputy McCollum is working with? I'm just wondering if some of this information that you're sharing can be shared with some of those cultural groups? Because, I mean, I know from a South Asian point of view specifically, sometimes we're hesitant to come forward to report these types of crimes because of feeling ashamed or it's our fault, etc. So I'm just wondering if you have had any crossover with those cultural groups that CPS is working with? Um, to kind of do some collaborating?
I have not presented to them, but I have had a conversation uh, with our internal committee lead. Um, and it was in relation to, you know, how do I best approach supporting the Indigenous victims? Uh, so that's the extent of my interaction at this point with the committee, but certainly I'm available to present uh, to them at any time.
That's fantastic. I just think more, the more we talk about it, it just, it becomes easier for people to come forward or to feel comfortable to come forward. So, thank you.
Thank you very much for your presentation. It was very helpful and um, certainly very full of information. So we very much appreciate it, Sergeant Doyle, Staff Sergeant Doyle. Thank you. So moving on to the next uh, agenda items, there are three regular reports. Um, the pandemic report, anti-racism action plan update and the crime update. Um, so I think uh, for essence of time, um, if I can turn it over to the service, if you can report, provide all those three reports. And the commissioners um, then will have a longer period of time to ask questions to answer those reports or other questions they may have. So I'll turn it over to you. Thank you.
Good, thank you Chair. Understood. We'll do five point two to five point four back-to-back, beginning with five point two, which is the impacts of the ongoing pandemic. Uh, Deputy Chief Gill will start by speaking to the internal impacts and then toss it over to Deputy Toffick will speak to the external side. So over to you Deputy.
Thanks Chief. Good afternoon Chair. Good afternoon Commission Members. I'll just give a quick update to the impacts of the pandemic. So in terms of impacts internally to the service, uh, with the pandemic and the recent Omicron variant, uh, have required the service to continue pivoting and redeploying our operational support resources as required. Uh, the services had much consultations with our members, our unit associations and subject matter experts as we navigate the policy and the practices related to the pandemic and the various waves and uh, uh, variants that are hitting us. Uh, we anticipate that this uh, this will continue to hit us for next uh, few weeks to a month, uh, based on what's happening in terms of medical information out of the public. Uh, and we continue to monitor, of course, our vaccination rates and are also our compliance for those that are on the rapid testing program. Uh, in terms of operational support, uh, given the fact that the pandemic has hit our uh, our members. Uh, so on, we've, uh, in the short term, we created what we call the Patrol Support Advisory Teams. And those are members from other parts of the service that have other duties and responsibilities and are temporarily redeployed uh, on a day shift or night shift basis to support uh, areas of our service that are short in, in Bureau of Community policing. Uh, so we started off with uh, seven members, working day shift, seven members working night shifts that are available to be redeployed across the city whenever we have shortages. And then we continue to pivot and, and monitor uh, there are resource needs and we will be able to adjust it and look at other resources if required. Other internal impacts to our service uh, are on the training piece. Uh, the restrictions, as you know, both affect our recruiting and in-service training due to the limited number of classrooms available to hold required uh, amounts of personnel in our service. Uh, our Chief Global Learning Center remains agile in their approach to training delivery based on the COVID impact and recruit classes. At times, individuals and whole classes have been taking part in virtual learning from home. To date, this hasn't impacted or hasn't been a detriment to our uh, timelines on training for recruits. Uh, however, this is consistently being monitored uh, to make sure that uh, we're providing the safest environment to our employees, but also learning, meeting our learning objectives. And uh, and before I just switch over to Deputy Topic, I think in summary, uh, CPS remains focused on service delivery and supporting our employees in their duties. Uh, we continue to remain agile and adjust our deployment model to meet the operational commitments that we have uh, across the city of Calgary.
Thanks, uh, Deputy Gill. And just to get into the uh, the external environment and some of the things that we've been seeing, we continue to participate in the Alberta Enforcement Framework for Repeat Offenders Operational Group that looks at COVID enforcement and uh, uh, work at a provincial level. Uh, that includes uh, representation from Alberta Health Services, Alberta Labor, Alberta Prosecution Services, uh, gaming and liquor and other law enforcement agencies. We collaborate at the provincial level to be aware of ongoing events, protests and different uh, businesses and locations that may be in defiance of the public health orders to follow through with the required inspections that might be needed. Uh, regarding the ongoing demonstrations, we continue to monitor and address those uh, anti-mask vaccine protest movements. And we've seen weekly demonstrations and protests occurring and are working with stakeholders within the City of Calgary to address those as they occur. Of course, uh, everyone's aware of the recent protests at residences of, residences of public officials at various orders of government. Uh, our major events and emergency management section has completed the response plan and shared it organizationally and also with other law enforcement agencies in relation to these types of protests that occur. Uh, in relation to those, we have our general investigated units in conjunction with our IMT investigative support area, continuing those investigations uh, to see what charges might be contemplated in consultation with prosecution services. So we are continuing to work on all of those. Uh, regarding uh, Alberta Health Services, we've received approximately fifty-six allegations of fraudulent vaccine documentation complaints uh, that are being followed up by our IMT investigations. And we continue to work with Alberta Health Services and the RCMP on those cases. Uh, more recently, the Public Health Agency of Canada has uh, reached out to our IMT to discuss their ongoing investigations regarding potentially fraudulent vaccine documentation coming through their area and CBSA points. These files uh, are being reviewed and assessed for any potential charges. To that end, our police online investigations team or POINT have assigned officers to assist the IMT with those investigations and uh, will continue with the ones that come in from that, at that point. Uh, and lastly, just some new legislation that we are uh, communicating and working through. The new federal law, Bill C3 for Intimidation of Healthcare Workers was introduced and they were passed unanimously in the House of Commons. That law took effect uh, uh, just a few weeks ago. And so that legislation has created specific intimidation offenses uh, under section four twenty-three point two, intimidation of health, health services. And that helps to further protect healthcare workers, those who assist them and persons seeking health services. These offenses will address circumstances where healthcare workers or persons seeking health services are subject to any intimidating con- conduct. That can include threats or other forms of violence or things that are intended to provoke fear or interfere with the duties of a healthcare worker or impede people from receiving healthcare services. So that, uh, we will continue to communicate with our members as far as any complaints that we would receive around that. Uh, regarding the crime and social disorder impacts, I'll speak to those when we get to the crime update just around what we've seen relative to the impacts of COVID.
Right, thanks deputies. That include, or that concludes that uh, particular report. We'll move to five point three, that's Anti-Racism Action Plan and the annual report. And for that, I'll turn it over to DC McCollum.
Thanks Chief. Good afternoon Chair. Good afternoon Commission Members. Thank you for the opportunity to provide our update. And uh, please allow me to share some highlights and some initiatives that we have been working on. As we continue to look toward 2022, we are confident that embedding our anti-racism work into the very fabric of who the Calgary Police Service is through our strategy. CPS's long-term strategic plan will help us to continue to have difficult conversations while working alongside our community to make a better, more equitable Calgary for all. A couple of our highlights from our end of year commitment report. Uh, with respect to our Anti-Racism Internal Action Committee, internal participation on our ERAC has increased by knowledge of systemic racism from sixty-five percent in August to eighty percent in December. With respect to our School Resource Officer Program Review, as we know, our survey was only able to reach three hundred and sixty-two students. And so further engagement has been planned and we are building an engagement strategy uh, moving forward with our many partners. With respect to our race-based data, we submitted one hundred community organizations, advisory boards and individuals, as well as agency names to Statistics Canada for Calgary-based consultation on race-based data. And we continue to work on interim strategies to move this work forward. With respect to our use of force, a curriculum designer was funded through our community safety investment framework to enhance and update and develop crisis training for recruits, frontline and our policing crisis team. Our Body worn Camera Initiative, in 2021, of the twenty-six recommendations, five were completed and fifteen are in progress, while six are being assessed. We also delivered equity diversion and inclusion training to over sixty members that cover topics such as equity, bias and diversity factors. Going forward, we will be defining our strategic plan, focusing on the areas we have identified that have potential systemic racism and reviewing the two hundred and fourteen recommendations we have gathered from numerous stakeholders. We will continue to work with both our internal and external ERAC committees and we will be adding resources to complement our current team. Just a couple of additional updates. On December ninth, twenty twenty-one, the internal ERAC completed their twenty twenty-one speaker series with a present- with a presentation from Jaclyn Edwards, presentation, a president of the Association of Black Law Enforcers. Jaclyn is a twenty six year plus veteran with Correctional Service of Canada and the first female elected to the President of the Association of Black Law Enforcers. Her presentation was titled co creating anti racist police culture, which was extremely well received by the committee. It is our intention to bring back Jaclyn in the form of a live stream to our service. Also, our promising practice research. On December eighteenth, Dr. Katrina Duhany of University of Calgary submitted her final CPS anti racism promising practice report for review. Topics researched included challenges implementing anti racism strategies and culture shift in paramilitary organizations and policing. Some of these recommendations included implementing anti racism and EDI training for all police personnel and developing recruitment, retention and promotion strategies to increase representational diversity. Training recommendations included anti racism, indigenous specific cultural awareness and competency and intercultural training, the history and impact of racialized policing and profiling as well as intergenerational trauma. We are fortunate to have Dr. Duhany present to our ELTSLT yesterday and she will be coming to our CPC Iraq in February. With respect to our training and education, we continue to work with our learning center to have our anti racism mandatory training completed by September of twenty twenty two. This timing also aligns with the RCMP mandatory United Against Racism Learning Series to be completed by all RCMP employees by September thirty of this year. We also are working on our indigenous and gender and sexual diversity training, which is scheduled to be completed for by the end of this year. You've heard me talk about our change management strategist. In December, we conducted interviews for this position to join our team. Five applicants were interviewed and a successful applicant was identified. And that individual will begin with us at the end of this month. With respect to our indigenous portfolio, first, I would like to take the time to acknowledge the ninety three burial sites the chief and council of Williams Lake First Nation revealed yesterday, Tuesday, January twenty fifth, twenty twenty two. The Calgary Police Service recognizes and acknowledges the recovery of unmarked graves in William Lake, Williams Lake, BC. We would like to extend our heartfelt condolences and support to all the communities dealing with these recoveries. Our organization is committed to uncovering the truth so we can move forward in reconciliation in a good way. CPS stands in solidarity with the indigenous community. These recoveries affect individuals in different ways and we encourage everyone to support one another with compassion and empathy in these difficult times. If you're someone you know needs support during this time, please reach out to two one one Alberta Health Link, the distress center Calgary, Native Counseling Services of Alberta, Awaton Healing Lodge, Elbow River Healing Lodge, the Aboriginal Friendship Center, or call a trusted family, friend or family member. In addition, we value our relationship with the Calgary Alliance for the common good. We've been very fortunate to have had numerous meetings and conversations with them throughout the past year. We recognize and validate their frustration with respect to us moving forward with the indigenous liaison officers in each of the districts. Our relationship with all the delegates of the Calgary Alliance who represent thirty seven thousand Calgarians is crucial in our path to truth and reconciliation and our shared goal of ensuring that Calgary is a safe place for indigenous citizens. The knowledge you have imparted to our service and our members is deeply valued. And we are here today to affirm we are committed to you, your delegation, indigenous Calgarians, truth and reconciliation today, tomorrow and for years to come. We cannot do this without your valued knowledge and partnership and we thank you. We have stood up an indigenous relations team that will be centralized, that will be the centralized coordination point for all activities related to the relationship building and truth and reconciliation with the indigenous community. Immediate objectives of this team are continuous revision of the indigenous roadmap, supported by community engagement, the establishment of a member circle within our service, an elder circle, and looking at the establishment of exchange programs with tribal police services in Alberta. We are also developing indigenous education and awareness training for our members, as I stated. To assist our team, we're in the process of hiring a cultural advisor. Our anti racism website team, sorry, our anti racism website. We have partnered with a local university and we have built a new CPS anti racism external and internal facing website. And we're optimistic that this will be unveiled soon. And just one other piece on our hate and extremism team. We presented to twenty six schools in December on the impacts of hate, grade seven through nine. This presentation was an overwhelming success and more schools are asking for this presentation. And finally, as the chair mentioned at the beginning, I am immensely proud to highlight our incredible teamwork that shared the implementation with our C nine one one and two one one partners yesterday. The two nine, the two one one C nine one one call diversion and co location initiative. This is one of many initiatives that we are working on to get the right services to the right people at the right time. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Katie. Lots going on there, obviously, and I'm always impressed with how much important work is moving forward in the service, especially with the context of the global pandemic and the and the previous report. So moving on to five point four, we'll talk about some other very important work going on in the service. This is the monthly crime report and I'm going to start shake it up this time. Let's start with Deputy Cook.
Thank you, Chief. We ended twenty twenty one with twenty one homicides and are currently sitting at one homicide so far in twenty twenty two. Our five year average for homicides is twenty six, so we fell below that average by twenty percent last year. The month of January typically sees between one and three homicides. Our homicide clearance rate for twenty twenty one is currently a fifty seven percent with twelve files cleared to date. During the period of twenty sixteen to twenty twenty one, our homicide unit detectives, crime analysts cleared a total of a hundred and sixteen homicides in our city with an average clearance rate of seventy six percent. So as time goes on, our clearance rates tend to go up. In twenty twenty one, we had three homicides related to organized crime and gang activity and an additional three related to drugs. The five year average for these motivations combined is ten homicides, so we were under the average by forty percent. A relatively low proportion of homicides related to organized crime and drug activity last year is an indicator of the successful efforts by officers, officers and analysts and members from across the service from patrol to alert to focus on investigations, enforcement and suppression activities on those involved in violent crime. As noted in previous CPC summaries, our org crime, gang, drug and gun related homicides are notoriously difficult to solve. Last year was no exception as four of the nine unsolved files fell into the categories of organized crime, gang or drug related and six out of the nine were gun related. We had three shootings in December, which registered below the December average. In fact, December twenty twenty one incidents were the lowest since twenty eighteen for that month. From a year end perspective, twenty twenty one ended with a total of ninety five shooting events, which was fifteen percent fewer than the previous year. Motivating motivations for shootings in twenty twenty one were largely undetermined. However, thirty three shootings were known to be related to personal grudge, drugs or group conflicts. Sixty nine of the shootings were investigated and determined not to be organized crime related, while four incidents were attributed to organized crime. The remaining twenty two incidents are either still under investigations or investigations have been closed and organized crime status was not ascertained. From stats, I will go into hopefully some context around the important work folks within our service lead for us every day within our service to keep our community safe. I'd be remiss not to thank our media partners for covering and reporting on many of these operations I'm about to describe that took place or ended in the last quarter of twenty twenty one to meet our overall annual policing plan commitment to reduce violent crime within the city of Calgary. Operation Game Day ended in November of twenty twenty one. Investigators laid twenty three charges and arrested three people in relation to a drug trafficking network that includes supplying dealers in Lethbridge, Alberta. After a three month long investigations, officers apprehended the suspects as well as two vehicles, approximately four hundred grams of cocaine with a street value of forty thousand dollars was recovered and seized and two loaded handguns and cash. During the course of this operation, resources from thirteen units across our service were used to help to bring the investigation to a successful conclusion, addressing violence and organized crime in Calgary as a priority for CPS and is being addressed by several areas of the service throughout investigations, enforcement and suppression activities. Operation Cron Father ended in November of twenty twenty, sorry, December of twenty twenty one was a CPS cyber crimes team investigation into the illicit online sale of cannabis. Our investigators worked with local law enforcement in BC and Alberta to execute numerous search warrants in Kelowna, Beaverdale and Calgary. As a result, approximately thirteen point seven million of property was seized along with approximately ten million of marijuana and philosophine. Four people are arrested and charged with numerous related offenses. Operation Grace ended in December of last year was a CPS guns and gangs investigation into drug trafficking by known organized crime offenders. Guns and gangs investigators identified a network that was operated by two offenders that supplied known drug dealers in Lethbridge, Alberta. Lethbridge Police Service assisted with surveillance and observed several activities consistent with drug trafficking with known drug dealers in their area. Calgary search warrants were executed at two residences, firearms were seized, including one loaded, as well as four hundred grams of cocaine, again with the street value of forty thousand dollars. Operations shallow concluded in November of twenty twenty one was a CPS Serious Adictual Offender Program Unit investigation into known serious habitual offenders residing in Calgary. CPS received intelligence that these offenders were working together involved in illegal drug trafficking and through various investigative strategies, evidence was obtained and supported the information. Following a more than three month investigation, warrants were executed at two residences and one vehicle. Drug charges were laid against four offenders and seizures included various drugs with an estimated street value of a hundred and thirteen thousand and ninety thousand in Canadian cash. Operation Ghoul ended again in November of twenty twenty one. Through investigative efforts, our guns and gangs investigation into the drug trafficking and criminal activity by four known organized crime offenders. The investigation through search warrants were executed at a residence in Calgary and firearms and drugs were seized. Offenders were charged with multiple firearms offenses as well as possession for the purpose of drug trafficking and breaches. I've known one of the offenders has a significant history of violence in Calgary and there has been a distinct and challenging pattern of custody release with this offender. Chair, I'd be remiss not to build upon your opening comments in relation to a homicide that concluded yesterday with sentencing. One of the most disturbing homicides from the last few years reached a significant milestone earlier this week. Robert Leeming has been convicted of killing twenty two month old Aleah Sanderson. And during the October twenty twenty one trial, Leeming pleaded guilty to killing Aleah's mother, Jasmine Lovett. In April twenty nineteen, in the southeast community of Princeton. I wanted to take this opportunity to share with you and recognize the numerous areas of the service that worked together to prepare the evidence the prosecution team needed to make their case against Leeming. And I want to publicly express our collective gratitude to the members of our service that played a part in bringing justice to the family of Jasmine and Aleah. Jasmine's family reported her missing to police after she missed a family dinner, prompting district eight patrol members to visit the residence she shared with Leeming. So thorough were the members in their observation inquiries that suspicion was cast upon Leeming early on, furthering our investigation by our frontline patrol members. Homicide and the missing persons team were then engaged. And because of the complex history between Leeming and Lovett and the information we had at the time, we also involved members from our general investigation unit and our domestic conflict unit. As homicide and missing persons narrowed their focus on Leeming in the early weeks, a crucial missing piece was where the remains of Jasmine Aleah were located. The public safety unit teamed up with missing persons to search the area west of Calgary. Hundreds of hours were spent searching for Jasmine and Aleah around Brad Creek. And although this work did not recover the remains, the efforts of the searchers cannot be diminished. The priorities crimes team was engaged and conducted a complex undercover operation and were able to locate the victim's remains along a forestry road, highway forty, providing some answers to the family. With the bodies recovered and Leeming charged, additional work needed to be done to prepare for trial. Part of this involved members in our forensic crime scenes unit teaming up with the traffic section to reconstruct the scene in Caninasca's country using neat new three D scanner technology. A video was created showing where the victim's bodies and other evidence was positioned in the remote area of a highway forty. In a first for our service, the video was presented at trial, giving viewers a much better depiction of what had happened. Back in Calgary, digital forensics retrieved critical evidence from the cell phone seized and body worn camera analysis from patrol first visit with Leeming's residents contributed contributed greatly to the investigation. Taken together, the evidence was undeniable. Leeming was responsible for the deaths of Jasmine and Aleah. Several units and teams have been recognized for their roles in the verdict. However, there is no doubt that other areas of the service contributed to this outcome as well. The evidence was so thorough and compelling that senior prosecutor, Mr. Doug Taylor credited our work when speaking with media following the verdict. He noted this was brilliant police work that resulted in bringing Mr. Leeming to justice for what he did. We are fortunate as a community to have such dedicated investigators and supports in the service. I'm extremely proud of the work done on this file. The convictions will not bring back Jasmine and Aleah. However, we can take solace in our professionalism and investigative efforts, which will ensure Leeming is held accountable for his actions. Thank you, Chair. I'll turn it over to Deputy Toffick.
Thanks, Deputy Cook, for that summary. I'll get into some of the trends that we're seeing and tracking as we speak. So the buy sell task force, which is an area that we've allocated resources to, has been put together due to the fact that in twenty twenty one, we had two hundred and seventy nine buy sell swarming or robbery offenses related to personal electronic devices across the city. Seventy five percent of those were related to secondhand marketplace transactions. Many of these incidents involved weapons or threats of violence. We've seen those events escalate in the fall of twenty twenty one and we've identified seventy eight young offenders who were identified to be involved from various communities across the city. A number of these offenders have also engaged in pharmacy and cannabis store robberies and other violent crimes in recent months. The task force we've set up has been established from a number of the districts to address these individuals with the propensity for violence and being involved in multiple offenses. They currently have forty two files under investigation. There's been thirty four production orders granted at this point and they've executed two search warrants to date. It's a relatively fresh task force that's been set up. And they've already led to some seizures and key evidence. Charges are anticipated very soon and from a prevention standpoint, the youth at risk development team is working with six of the young offenders identified and we are focusing on all aspects from prevention through to enforcement tactics to address this issue. It kind of crosses over into the cannabis store robberies that we've been seeing. In twenty twenty one, we had a total of twenty eight cannabis store robberies with an additional three occurring to date in January of twenty twenty two. Although occurring citywide, we noticed a greater percentage in district five and incidents spiking over the December holiday break. Most of these incidents have involved either a weapon or the threat of a weapon and some gratuitous violence. And uh some gratuitous violence, violence that is not necessary whatsoever. To date, there have been nineteen offenders charged, sixteen of which are young offenders with additional thirteen suspects identified. Uh, that they are working through. And to date, thirty one percent of those robberies have been cleared by charge with an additional forty two percent open or still under investigation and they're working forward on those. Notably, there's been crossover between the offenders involved in the pharmacy robberies, cannabis store robberies. Convenience store robberies and the buy and sell swarming robberies that we've been seeing. There, we've also had recent discussions with a number of the cannabis retailers. On some crime prevention strategies that could be implemented to hopefully reduce these occurrences. Next, I'll move into uh the LRT safety and violence in relation to the LRT. Uh, and take this with a grain of salt, so I'm comparing it to the two thousand and twenty numbers which were lower than your typical five year average. But since two thousand and twenty, moving to two thousand and twenty one, there's been about a thirty percent increase. In violent events at LRT stations across the city. Most of these violent events were comprised of common assaults, uh some assault with weapon and others are street robberies. To date in two thousand and twenty two, we've seen thirty nine additional events. Uh, and those all being at different LRT stations and they are distributed across various districts. Uh, crime and disorder in relation to the LRT lines continues to be a priority for us. Uh, at the end of the recent cold snap, we partnered with Transit to provide uh support in addressing their their efforts. To provide shelter and supports to some of the vulnerable that were using the LRT stations uh for residences. Uh, they've engaged support services in doing that to transfer numerous people to shelters and other support services. That have proper facilities for their use. Both the CPS and Transit has experienced increased calls for service in relation to public safety from the transit ridership. And so we're focusing on on those areas. Transit has continued to respond to a higher volume of overdoses at at the stations. Uh, likely in conjunction with some of that uh gathering that's been occurring. We've been paying very close attention to violence and disorder across these locations. With some stations having a higher frequency than others. Uh, LRT, crime and disorder are are currently a crime reduction priority. For almost all of our districts as a priority that we focus on with proactive patrols occurring. And we are in regular and ongoing communication and cooperation with the Calgary Transit. To try to address some of the issues we've been seeing. We've made a number of recent arrests in relation to some of the violence that we've been seeing there. Next, I'll move to the grandparent fraud scam with charges laid uh in December two thousand and twenty one, we had a. A series of several seniors aged seventy to approximately ninety years of age were targeted and contacted by individuals claiming. That a loved one was in custody and they required money for their release. Uh, the suspects would courier uh. Uh, did or send a courier to their location to collect the funds. Uh, occasionally occasionally contacting the victims on more than one occasion to get more more funding. A number of those seniors were uh defrauded of close to ninety thousand dollars. Uh, we were able to obtain phone numbers and video evidence. And subsequent to a media release that was shared with community on December twenty first, warning seniors about the this trend. We were able to identify an individual and a vehicle that were involved. And partly this was due to our district operations team identifying one individual. As a result of that, a search warrant was executed on January fifth, two thousand and twenty two. On a residence, two storage containers and a vehicle that led to the seizure of a firearm, taser, ammunition, cell phones and banking information. And two individuals were subsequently charged with these offenses. Lastly, I'll just conclude with an overview of the crime picture that we're seeing, given that we have the year end wrap up. Uh, for December two thousand and twenty one alone, domestic violence in the month of December was down approximately thirty four percent. Uh, to the end of the year, it was down eighteen percent or eight hundred and thirty eight cases of reported domestic violence. Domestic reporting in December two thousand and twenty one as compared to other the year. And month prior was up fourteen percent and for the year up ten percent overall. So fourteen hundred and seventy four cases where people are coming forward to engage police and other resources. Prior to it becoming a violent incident. For non domestic violence, we saw an increase in seven percent in December. Or eleven percent full year or seven hundred and six more cases of violent, non domestic violence. And relative to COVID and some of the impacts that I was mentioning with the COVID update. Residential and commercial break and enters saw continued reductions. A residential break and enters down twenty six percent in December, down twenty seven percent for the year or twelve hundred and forty two cases. Commercial break and enters down thirty six percent in December and down thirty three percent for the year or fifteen hundred and thirty cases. We saw a slightly smaller trend with vehicle thefts down twelve percent in December. And twenty two percent for the year, so twelve hundred and eighty seven cases for the full year. And car prowling's down twenty nine percent in December and a total of twenty five percent. Year to date or thirty four hundred and four cases. Social disorder, uh social and physical disorder in December two thousand and twenty one, we saw an increase of one percent. It was very marginal. But for the year, we saw an increase by five percent or approximately forty six hundred calls for service. Related related to social disorder. So that gives you a high level overview. Some of the aspects around property crime, I think, can be attributed to some of the COVID impacts and people. Uh, you know, spending more time around in residential areas, et cetera. But for others, uh, we can't make strong conclusions one way or the other. But I'll leave it there and we can go on to questions.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, that concludes the Chief's report uh for the month of uh January here. Back to you for any questions. Uh, the team might have.
Thank you. I'll open it up to all commissioners. Commissioner Russell, please go ahead.
Thanks, just a couple of questions. Um, at the beginning, you talked about resourcing during the pandemic and the addition of the patrol support teams. But can you give us a sense for how much of the workforce overall has been off at one time recently due due to COVID?
Commissioner, I can, I can, just as far as uh some rough numbers from March of two thousand and twenty when the pandemic started up until the end of November of this year. So, uh, well over a year and a half, we uh, as a service, we had two hundred and thirty nine positive cases. In the month of December and so far in January, we've had four hundred and twenty eight positive cases. We've nearly doubled by the time this. Month ends to, in the last two months, we've doubled what we did almost over a year and a half. Uh, goes as far as current uh numbers go, uh, I have it here just a second. Uh, we have roughly about seventy members. Give me a second, I will pop up the numbers as fresh as uh half an hour ago. So sixty one active cases right now in service. Uh, of those sixty one cases, eighty three percent of the members are sworn officers, seventeen percent are civilian members.
And if I could just add, Commissioner, and this actually is consistent with what we're hearing about. Uh, potentially, hopefully, a plateau or uh that we've peaked. Uh, certainly, our numbers were higher, uh, and this actually represents a reduction. And so we're hoping that's going to hold. Uh, this number that Deputy Gill's reported is actually good news relative to what it looked like a week ago. So, uh, so yeah, so a good trend.
That's good, that uh, because that sounds really high. So hopefully that, hopefully that does continue trending down. Um, and then during the anti racism update, um. Deputy McClellan, you mentioned the that the mandatory anti racism training is expected to be complete by the end of two thousand and twenty two. Can you just confirm the intention, though, is to have kind of ongoing refreshment training required throughout each member's career, right?
Well, thanks, Commissioner, for your question. You're absolutely right. Uh, we can, we will continue additional training, speaker series and so forth. So yes, it's not a one and done. It will continue. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. That's it. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Campbell, please, go ahead.
Thanks very much, Chair. Um, two questions. Um, Deputy Chief Topic and Executive Director Hutchins. Are you able to share an estimate of the costs in millions? I think um that CPS has tracked to manage. The ongoing anti mask, anti vaccination, white supremacist rallies that have occurred during the course of the pandemic, please.
Yeah, so that um, that came in close to what we estimated, uh, I think, starting back in September of two million dollars.
Thank you very much. Uh, my second question um is for Deputy Chief McClellan. Uh, first, congratulations again on co-location of two one one. And nine one one and the call diversion work to support Calcarians in crisis and experiencing other vulnerabilities. Um, my question is actually with respect to the hate and extremism education work you mentioned in schools. Um, does this education work taken to account work to prevent radicalization of young people into terrorist groups like the Proud Boys and Soldiers of Oldham, Sons of Oldham? Um, do we track data and information on young people being radicalized? Into these type of extremist hate groups and terrorist groups.
Uh, thanks, Commissioner, for your compliments and appreciation. I appreciate that. Uh, with respect to your question, yes, we do. Um, as you know, we have that hate and extremism team and our redirecting. And we do continue to gather those statistics and we do include that information in our in our presentations.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you. Commissioner Counselor Walcott.
Uh, hi, everybody. First, I did actually want to also echo. My congratulations for the two in one pilot program that's going off. I was. Very excited about it, no matter what hat I'm wearing, whether it's a counselor or a commissioner, that's a it's a major step in in the right direction. Uh, there was uh, it was, that was a hefty report, so I have a kind of a broad cross section of questions that I'll try and stay brief on. Um, so the first one's really just on the vaccination. Uh, and and COVID policies, just a really straightforward one. It's just, can you provide an update on vaccine compliance for officers, like even just like the percentage? And um, just to follow up on it as well to the success of the testing program in the past couple of months. Just as we look toward, and this one's just a discretionary thing, so please use discretion as necessary. My memory serves, we, the test kits. Were scheduled to go until around March. So now that we're about a month away, if we could maybe even just comment on. Uh, the vaccination policy as we move toward the end of the current stockpile or if my memory is correct, of course. So, uh, compliance, how's the program working and and kind of what's gonna happen in the near future when? As we move past the initial testing program that started in December.
Uh, Counselor, in terms of your questions, I can tell you that uh, just I'm just shy, so ninety three point seven percent, seventy five percent. So ninety four percent of CPS employees are fully vaccinated. Uh, we have then roughly about six percent that are in the rapid testing program. Uh, our policy is is going quite well. We have uh, we have. A daily compliance numbers between the uh, our incident management team and our human resources team. Uh, compare numbers and when we pull up the raw data, we go through each individual file. Uh, to make sure that the members are complying with the rapid testing program, which is twice a week separated by seventy two hours. Uh, we, since our policy's been implemented, we've had uh two resignations. And we have several members that are uh undergoing the disciplinary process for non compliance. Uh, so our numbers in those two areas remain relatively low. Uh, and and I would say we, that's attributed to the way we introduce that policy. Uh, in terms of future state, you're right, we are planning uh our current stock. Uh, in consultation with the city of Calgary is going to a March thirty first. Uh, and the ongoing conversations uh between our incident management team and the city of Calgary uh continue. Uh, so I don't have an answer for you what we're gonna do after March thirty first. Uh, we're right now working toward March thirty first.
Um, amazing, okay. And and I assume so. I just really thought, I I thought today would be a great opportunity to just ask the question so that we weren't uh. You know, asking the questions a few days before that thirty first started happening. So we'll keep that online and then uh we'll probably circle back to it next month. Um, these next kind of sets of questions, uh, the anti vaccination protest, I think. Commissioner Campbell really kind of asked that question for me, but uh, they're a little more toward the chief and the article that was published. Uh, in the Sun with with Rick Bell. And the only reason I bring it up is a very important um perspective that. I think I, we all share in this room, digital room. And it's about the language and the narrative that we we use in this work in this, as we move toward. Really what it means to be anti racism. I think the way we tell stories and and the language we use kind of has to be collectively on the same page. So there were parts of that article that. I wanted to maybe use the public session to. Contextualize uh or correct because I know that the media sometimes only tells parts of a of a story or so. Uh, if it's inappropriate time and I I I refer to the chair on this one as well too, is please do, don't hesitate to to. Slow me down or cut me off at any point, please, for the sake of time. Um, but the first question is a is a very straightforward one. Uh, for the for the chief and it's it's one of the opening lines of the Rick Bell article in the Sun is that you suggest you are not a woke cop. And and I'm curious if you could potentially just explain what that means to you to to be or not to be a woke cop.
I I think it's an interesting question, uh, Counselor Walcott. I'm not even certain if I fully, uh, I wouldn't even want to tell you what the what the. Um, definition of the word woke is, I think that's probably open to some interpretation. That wasn't part of the discussion between myself and Mr. Bell, so I I would say maybe that's some editorialization. So can't can't really help you there.
Uh, sorry, oh, well, maybe it might be worth following up on because it's, he has it as a direct quote. Uh, in there.
Sure, that's fine. Follow up uh as you wish.
Uh, okay, let's see. Well, in that case, then, so just a again follow up. Um, with other lines that were taken in there, it's. Further down, you suggested that you and the service need to be unapologetically the police. Uh, I was just curious again, and can can you explain that further? Since on the subject of anti racism and anti discrimination. You know, the CPS, the commission, we're all working really together to combat and and battle anti racism and anti discrimination. So just to contextualize, because again, this is the purpose of these questions really are to. Clarify that we're on the the same page in the way the language is portrayed. Um, so when you say you're on a, you would, you want the police to be unapologetically the police, what does uh, what does that mean?
Yeah, thanks. Happy to help you out there. Yeah, so I I actually want to simplify things and remove the politics uh from. Uh, policing and help members to be able to understand the space that they occupy and to be proud of it. I think that's come out a couple of times in discussions we've had here with commission that. There's, I think there's probably a segment of the population that that, you know, either tries to or. Directly or indirectly make police officers feel bad for the work that they do. And I think structurally, the police are required in uh, in society. There's there's little question about that. We've heard a lot about the important work that they do today, and I I think they should be commended for the work that they do. And I mentioned in the article that, you know, in many cases, people seem to get confused thinking that we're responding to a particular, you know, segment of the population or. Uh, particular group, but actually we're responding to behavior. And so if we start to think about who it is that we're responding to, uh, and then looking at handling those situations differently. I think it becomes very difficult to be a police officer. Did we, we lose you? I think you might be on mute, Counselor.
Perfect, got it. Uh, no, no, sorry, I was on mute. I, um, and yeah, I actually, I I firmly agree is. Like, I I firmly agree and and that's kind of why I wanted to ask the question as well too, is because. Yeah, the editorializing part of the conversation might. Partly a a little bit of a different set of implications and and I did want to actually correct something is is you were correct. Uh, you were absolutely correct in that uh Rick Bell editorialized the woke comment in a very. A heavy implication, but definitely not a direct quote. So I definitely wanted to make sure that I corrected that in the public session before. Before we move too far, I followed up with it. Um, a follow up question. It actually fits really well with what you just described and it's, there was an implied offense to the idea that. People are still calling you and the CPS uh racist and and I think that that really fits well with what you just described. It's to remind people of the. Of 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 a balance in the sense that there is a place in our society. Currently and and probably for a very, very long time for CPS and other organizations like it to exist and there's some great work that's done. So I I wanted to like kind of acknowledge before my question here from personal experience that is extremely challenging. Uh, to hold up our commitment to change when under constant pressure and criticism. Uh, but that challenge is a part of the responsibility we hold in our business of power. So. I really wanted to make sure that in the public session you had an opportunity to comment on the the challenge of pushing through public criticism to uphold. Uh, our commitment to anti racism.
Yeah, thank you. And just to move back to the the woke, thank you very much for that because it's simply not a word that I use. So how it ended up in there, I don't know, but I I don't use that word. So uh, so thanks for that. And yeah, I I think your comments are good. I like, let there be no question about the fact that we stand firm in our commitments. And I think actually our record can can speak for itself in relation to that. I I'm um, sometimes I'm shocked at how much has been able to be moved in a short period of time and we had, we hear people say, well, it's not enough. And and I get that too. I I think if I was uh frankly, a member of a racialized community, it wouldn't be enough for me either. And so I I totally get that. And so I I totally get that. But I can tell you that, you know, trying to move forward with with change on as many fronts as we have been. To follow up with our commitments to anti-racism, in the middle of a pandemic, when we've been dealing with staffing issues and challenges. And all the other things that we've been hearing about here has been frankly, a real challenge. And so I commend the men and women of the service for doing that. But I I simply just wanna underscore again that the environment has been very, very challenging. And I think we see it in the morale and we see it in sort of the sentiment felt by our members on the front line and elsewhere. And I think it's very important that we stand up for these folks and say thank you for the work that you do. You're doing incredibly important work at an incredibly difficult time. And so I think to keep keep underscoring that message, I I have a unique spot, obviously, because I sit in a chair where I I get to see and hear about the good things that happen. And also the bad things, don't kid yourself. But cer- certainly the good things. And so at a time when I, and I really appreciate the tone and tenor of the meeting thus far here today. Because I've heard a lot of acknowledgement of a lot of the great work that the men and women of the police service are doing by the Commission. Which is, which is really welcomed. I mean, the the Commission is the governance body that actually holds our feet to the fire on the, on the the changes that we commit to. And the work that we're going to do. And I think the Commission does a great job of it. But to also hear the context and and to hear about the good things that are going on, I think means a lot, means a lot to me personally, and I know it will mean a lot to our members. So I think it's, it's for us though, to make sure that we keep some balance in the conversation, because it gets very difficult to continue with on the journey. In a, in an inherently negative environment where, you know, the good work that you do and the wins that you achieve are not acknowledged. And yet every time there's a stumble in a very, very risky profession at times, you know, the the daggers are cast. And so anyway, I think, I think there's no question about the fact that we're on the same page. We've never wavered from the commitment, and I think you see that in the work that we do day to day. So thank you, appreciate the questions.
Yeah, and I, again, I appreciate the the tone of the response as well too, cuz anytime we, I think anytime context from a conversation. Or even just the fact that it is a conversation itself is removed, sometimes in the form of of articles, sometimes in the form of posts on social media, etc. Like, those are the moments when which the actual dialogue is the least effective. So an opportunity like this to clarify some things is is pretty powerful. One final question, Chair, and then I'll I'll turn it over. And it's, this one is, this one is a direct quote. And so this one, we're just, again, we're asked for some contextualization in the sense of making sure that we're correcting the narrative in the public. The quote from the article is, was in reference to some of the criticism that you're hearing in a less offensive manner. Like, there was the heavy criticism, the ACABs, the, like, that that is on on one side. That, to be honest, no one's, I'm gonna fight you on that one at all about appropriateness. It's more so with this one here, it's this criticism of don't over-police, don't be all over them all the time for everything, don't criminalize them. Don't put them into the criminal justice system if they don't belong there, don't offend them. That was a quote that Rick Bell utilized from you in this interview. There's a, there isn't, there is an implication attached to to the language, sometimes maybe suggesting that. The the demands are are too much, right? And and I acknowledge that that implication also comes from my own personal biases and in understanding. So I wanna be very clear that I'm not suggesting what you're saying. I am suggesting how it was received. Is that some of the changes that are being called for might be too much. So in light of the commitment to transformational change, and especially after the alternative response model, a pilot project that was launched yesterday. Can you contextualize that comment for me as well?
Yes, I think I can, Councillor, thanks. And so the the context of the of the quote there is in relation to what I was saying about. The expectations on police right now. And I think it will be driven home in the presentation you'll see in the closed portion as well. Is that I think there's more to the discussion than I, than I think some people are getting. And I think, again, the police occupy a particular space, even when, even when dealing with the vulnerable and marginalized community. And so at the end of the day, it is true that we should be looking, and we do frankly. I think there's a, there's a disparity between what sort of that old adage between, you know, what people think I do and what I really do. And so there is a, there is a disparity there. I think at the end of the day, you know. There are, there are members of marginalized communities that are committing crimes, very, very serious crimes. And the police need to occupy the police space. And so, yes, it's, it's very true that there's mitigating factors that may have to do with intergenerational trauma, they may have to do with. You know, addictions, mental health, these types of things. And those are things that actually have to be assessed and weighed by the courts later. At the time, the police can't occupy all of those spaces. They basically have to deal with what's in front of them, deal with the public safety issues. And and basically exercise the powers and authorities that have been bestowed uniquely on the police to go ahead and do those things. And later on, those, all of those things will be identified, they'll be weighed, and they'll be taken into consideration. But I worry that the police are expected to to do all these things. And again, try not to be, yeah, try not to offend anybody along the way. And I think we're in an environment of hypersensitivity right now where the police just need to be the police. That's, that's my opinion in relation to that. It's certainly not an offensive one, cuz I understand the issues and I believe that our officers are 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 dealing with every opportunity they have. To, you know, divert people from the criminal justice system, to connect people with resources. When they're dealing with people who actually wanna be connected to resources and and, you know, the the example I use sometimes is if you go into the the store there. And there's somebody shoplifting food, that's easy. Those are the easy ones. We're talking about the ones that that. Are either too sick or too addicted to understand that they need the help. And so those are, those are some of the challenges that we face. I got a a letter the other day from a young boy, Felix. Felix is eight years old. He lives downtown. And he writes about walking to school with his mother and the fact that he's scared to walk to school with his mother, because there's vulnerable individuals in the alley. Who yell and scream at them and they're, and they're scared to walk. And he talks about, Chief, I'd like to see more police officers, because it makes me feel better when there's more police officers. And he talks about sometime in the future, he wants to walk to school on his own. You know, that, that's a bit heartbreaking in a way, in thinking that's what's going on in our communities right now. And all of us have a space. It's not just the police, but the police do have a space in all of that. And so I, when I say that we need to unapologetically be the police, we could just gotta occupy our space. And so I I I do believe that. I hope it wasn't offensive to you or anybody else. But it, but it was also a supportive message to the people that are just trying to be the police and to occupy the space and to occupy it smartly in the way that I think they do.
No, and I appreciate the context. What I would, what I would suggest as. And and I would hope to move this conversation forward as well too, without taking up more time from the rest of Commission. It's to really understand the intrinsic and intersectional connection between what you just described. And the other aspects of society that we collectively are are actually looking to embrace as well too. Your description of the police to fill their, fill that space, the space that was designated to the CPS. Part of the discussion that we're often having in the anti-racism world alongside even Commission here is to really understand that. The space that has been designated to the police was also a space that was never best served by the police in full. To, so to, again, to to make sure that these conversations are always coming out in that absolute balance that that is suggesting that. Until we have the systems that are necessary to reduce the burden on the police. And until we have the systems necessary and the the different types of solutions to create the safe neighborhoods and the safe streets that we all require. That space will be occupied. However, it's always just not to forget that our intention is to actually reduce the burden on the police. And sometimes I think. That in our, in our efforts to defend ourselves, we actually end up. Becoming counterintuitive to the long-term outcome that we've collectively agreed upon. And I understand that. I think that's actually very natural, is when you're occupying a challenging space and being criticized every single day. It it becomes very challenging to to maintain, like, you know, the eye on the, the final outcome that we're all trying to achieve. And so that, that would be my only request in the future is to make sure that balance is consistently achieved. And and this conversation, this willingness to have this conversation, especially in public session, I think is, is a really good way of doing that. It's really supportive. So I really appreciate your answers. And yeah, apologize to the, apologies to the Chair for, for taking up too much time.
Thanks, and I appreciate your questions, Councillor Walcott. And I think too, don't forget, we've been, I think we've been leading in that space. I think there are, there are areas that are not best occupied by the police. And I I would like to think that there's probably nobody that's been more open to the discussion to say, let's, let's see how we change those structures. And so we're right there with you. And so appreciate it. There's areas, obviously, that the police will continue to occupy as they should. And so like I said, we're just trying to support the people that are doing the incredibly difficult work, and and I know you are too. So thank you.
Thank you for the conversation. I think that was a very important conversation. And I think to have this kind of conversation both today and ongoing is critical. And how these messages and the stories and the language that gets used, that's come up a couple of times this afternoon, is is critically important. And so checking in on that on a regular basis, I think is is hugely valuable. Are there any other questions on these reports from the commissioners? No? Okay. With that, I would like to say thank you very much to everyone at the service for these reports. There was, as usual and always, a ton of information, very good information, very helpful information. And we very much appreciate having this presented to us today. So now I will move on to the other agenda items in this section of the meeting that are related to the Commission itself. The first item is a report from the Executive Director of our support staff, Executive Director Heather Spicer. Please go ahead, Heather.
Thank you, Chair. I have nothing to add to my written report for tonight.
Are there any questions from the Commission on E D's report? No? Okay, thank you very much. We will now take a moment, several moments to hear from the commissioners who represent the Commission on various associations. And committees outside of the CPS. Commissioner Zhang will join our meeting later today. He wasn't able to be here at the first part of it. And he'll rep- provide his report to the Alberta Association for Police Governance then. So we'll put that one on hold for a moment, for a little bit. And I will ask Commissioner Siddiqui for a report on the Canadian Association for Police Governments, Governance. Commissioner Siddiqui, do you have things you'd share with us?
Thanks, Chair. We're actually meeting this week quite a bit, so I'll have more at the next meeting for you.
Great. Thank you very much. I will provide a report on the Calgary Police Youth Foundation, of which I'm a member. The Calgary Police Youth Foundation held their annual awards in November in an online event. This was focused on exceptional youth who have participated in the programs funded by the foundation and were celebrated as such. They're representative of the significant efforts to connect and support our youth who are at risk in partnership with our educators, CBE and separate school. Individual donors and members of the service to help them avoid bad choices and progress towards reaching their potential. It was a very inspiring evening, and I know their work continues on throughout the year. Finally, I would like to ask Commissioner North Pagan to provide her report from the Alberta Law Enforcement Response Team's. Civilian Advisory Committee.
Yes, thanks, Chair. In addition to my written report, there was a chief executive officer appointed. And this, the new appointment went to Superintendent Mark Coughlin, and he's a twenty-four member. Of the Edmonton Police Service and has previous experience with alert. And we have called a meeting for February tenth to actually sit down and meet the new executive director. Other than that, my report is submitted, and I'm willing to take any questions.
Any questions from commissioners on any of these reports? Thank you. That's the end of our presentations and reports for today. With this, we will now invite our public guests who have registered to speak. One of our staff will invite you to unmute yourself one at a time. As a quick reminder, as per our current procedures, you will have three minutes to speak and your comments are directed to myself as Chair. I will comment, though, that we we accept your comments as information. Unfortunately, we cannot provide a response under our current process and procedures. We know this practice falls short of what people expect and are currently reviewing several potential changes for next meeting. That will allow for more meaningful dialogue with community members. Those opportunities are coming forward for discussion later tonight. Please keep your comments to topics of police governance and oversight. We cannot discuss any complaint about a specific officer or interaction with the police. If you'd like to discuss a complaint against an officer, please contact our Public Complaint Director or the Calgary Police Service Professional Standard Section. And finally, a reminder to members of the media that we will hear from the public first, then we'll hold a media availability for you. After joining, after adjourning the public meeting. So would you please put through the first speaker?
Thank you, Chair Cornet. I'm going to apologize in advance for any mispronunciations of names. Please do feel free to correct me. If I do that, our first speaker is Ms. Cario Zeus, representing the. Hold on, I didn't do myself, sorry, the question, Calgary Alliance for the Common Good.
Good afternoon, Chair. Thank you for allowing me to speak today. My name is Suzanne Garehio Deuce, and I am the lead Indigenous organizer for the Calgary Alliance for the Common Good. I'm also the co-chair for the Truth and Reconciliation Research Action Team, and I work for IAF Northwest, which is a regional. Organization. As you know, the Calgary Alliance has been presenting to the CPC since last spring to keep the Commission informed of our progress with CPS. And to have one Indigenous liaison officer hired for each of the eight districts. At each of your meetings, we've told you how we've been able to build a productive working relationship with CPS. And at your November meeting, we reported that CPS had committed to hiring an Indigenous liaison officer pending approval of the budget. The budget, which it was. We have now hit an impasse. And we've been told this week that CPS's work to create Indigenous Relations Office. Will proceed, excuse me, pardon me. The hiring of the Indigenous liaison officers will not happen in the foreseeable future. The Alliance is now reassessing the viability of us continuing to support CPS in its, if, in its efforts to ensure that Calgary becomes a safe place. For Indigenous citizens. Frankly, we're really frustrated. The Alliance has been having this conversation with CPS for over a year and a half now. And from our first meeting with Deputy Chief McCullen and Superintendent Rashid in October of twenty-twenty. We heard, we'd love to do this, but, and we have worked diligently and responding to their butts. In helping them move those butts out of the way. They asked for a liaison job description, and we gave, we created one and gave them that. They'd, they've asked us to attend different events, and we've joined them at those. We supported their budget in November of twenty-one. We actually went to our members and asked them to support the CPS budget increase. Being held that the ILOs would be linked to that approval. Many of our members were not pleased with this ask, but we asked them to back us anyway. We backed them, and now we're being told that it's not gonna happen. And many of our members are looking at defunding the police as opposed to supporting increased funding. And so now we feel like we've been very, very much deceived. And I I understand that CPS is trying to juggle a lot of balls. But at the same time, we've been talking about language all afternoon, and yet we hear. The comment about, oh, we have serious criminals that are committing crimes. And we know about, you know, intergenerational trauma, which is a term that is typically linked to Indigenous people. And yet that's the link we make immediately. So let's all be aware of our language and how that is implied. Our Indigenous people are being. Our Indigenous people are dying at the hands of CPS and the lack of appropriate policing. So I would really like that we could maybe move forward and get some work done. Thank you for your time and I appreciate you listening.
Thank you very much, Ms. Kario Zeus. Appreciate your comments and certainly we've, please know that we've heard them and we appreciate your your participation providing those to us. So thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Our next speaker is Mr. Raj Kumar Kattan.
Hi there. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, thank you. Please go ahead.
Hi there. Firstly, thank you for allowing me to speak and happy new year to everyone. I'm a bit late to the pie regarding the anti-racism work that's going on and that's the area I wanted to just to talk about very briefly. I had a read through last year's report and reports of the Anti-Racism Committee in regards to policing. There were different recommendations of training, language, culture, et cetera. And I've been listening to what's on the agenda today as well. One of the things that stands out to me is that a lot of these issues of racism can be addressed not just through training or PowerPoint presentations, but if the CPS had a better recruitment process from the community it serves, a lot, a lot of the local knowledge, intelligence can be transcended through into police training and culture through the diverse people it hires. The best form of anti-racism training is having people from the community work on the same job. Now, I know this from my own experience working at the Home Office in the UK. And for the record, I'm a key demographic. I'm male. I'm East Indian. My experience in bridging cultural differences, the locals and law enforcement is something you just can't train. Now, in regards to the anti-racism and recruitment at the CPS, I'd just like to give a, an example. Let's say you went to the zoo. And if we said we need to hire a variety of animals to solve different crimes, but the first test to entry was to climb a tree, how would a fish, penguin or elephant compete that test? That's the CPS hiring process at its first point. When compared to the London Metropolitan Police Service or the 45 Police Force in the United Kingdom, the CPS recruitment process appears to be outdated. It's actually easier for unexperienced Canadian high school graduate to become a CPS officer versus an immigrant who is experienced within working with law enforcement agencies. That's a fact as of today. Now, to give an example, if I applied and I'm a Canadian citizen from the UK, I'm sorry, I'm a Canadian citizen. I have to take 10 steps for every one taken by local. Now, I'm not asking for the CPS to lower its standards, but compared to when I applied to be a special constable for the Met, that process was more rounded in identifying skills and tapping into local knowledge and intelligence. So I, I think if you're going to deal with racism, recruitment is the first port of call. There has to be some hard conversations on this and it, I feel it has been overlooked. We need to look, sorry, we need to learn from other leading police institutions globally on how they have addressed racism. We don't need to necessarily reinvent the wheel on that. The police has to be representative of the community it serves. We police by consent. And I feel under the current recruitment model based on my evidence and experience, it just lacks a flexibility to draw from the diverse community. That's what I wanted to add.
Thank you very much for those comments, Mr. Kattan. Very much appreciated. Again, we've definitely made notes and appreciate your input. So thank you for, for your time and participation today. Much appreciated.
Thank you, Chair. Our final speaker today is Mrs. Jordan.
Please go ahead, Ms. Jordan.
Can you hear me?
Yes, yeah, please go ahead.
Perfect. So first of all, I would like to thank Mr. Walcut for, Walcut for the comments he made and the questions that he asked. I feel that honestly, that was the most frank and real conversation I've heard from the CPC from the time period that I've been listening. And I would love to hear more thoughtful and well researched questions. At the end of the day, we all need to be responsible for our behavior and that does include the police. I think our police chief is very skilled at answering questions. However, he is fully aware of the actions that his own officers have in fact done that have negatively impacted the community and that does need to be addressed. Okay, so firstly, beyond that, just to address the CPC, I would like to comment on some of the employees of the CPC including our executive director, Heather Spicer. For those of you who are unaware, these individuals who work for the CPC are paid full-time employees of the Calgary Police Commission. Until this week, despite working full-time for the commission on topics ranging from logistics to conduct oversight of the police, none of these employees were mentioned either by title or name on the official CPC website. Their association with the CPC and their work was not publicly posted in any transparent fashion, nor did the website state that their city-funded rules even existed. In fact, for all intents and purposes, these employees and their work were kept completely hidden from the public view. While these employees no doubt do a great deal of necessary and important work in the CPC, in my opinion, the ties that some of these individuals have to the Calgary Police Service at the very least brings into question the true independence of the oversight work that the Calgary Police Commission does. As a citizen, I wonder why it is that we have a system in which the Civilian Volunteer Commission, the core purpose of providing independent oversight feels it is acceptable to not actively disclose to the public employees like their own executive director, who arguably as full-time workers have a strong influence on matters before the commission. As a citizen, what I would like to see going forward is for my representatives of the CPC to take seriously their commitment to transparency, a commitment they made by accepting their position on this board and take actionable steps to one, be more transparent in regards to the way in which the CPC does its work, including providing greater access to information, not only upon request, but as a general value going forward and to creating a culture of collaboration with citizens and valuing their input rather than fighting against requests for information. These steps are essential because citizens need to be able to trust the CPC to be transparent in order to feel safe and secure about the representation within the system of the CPS. I hope that both my CPC executive director, Heather Spicer, and the board chair, Sean Fournette, will commit themselves to demonstrating that they recognize the value and importance of transparency in the work that they do for the citizens of this city.
Thank you very much, Ms. Jordan. I appreciate your suggestions and recommendations and please know that we've heard them and will absolutely take them under consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. That is the, the last of our public participants.
All right. I would like to thank everyone for joining us today, members of the service, the public members who provided their thoughts and input. We have listened and appreciate your participation. At this time, now I would like to adjourn the public portion of this month's commission meeting and thank everyone for coming today. The Calgary Police Service members and members of the public can now leave the meeting. Commissioners may choose to take a break if they like. And the chief and I will stay on to take questions from the media. Commissioners and presenters for the in-camera portion of the meeting are asked to sign in using that meeting's link in about 15 minutes. So thank you very much to everyone and Corin, can you please cue up the reporters now?
Thank you, Chair Cornet. We have four reporters who have requested to ask questions. We will start today with Madeline Smith from Post Media. Go ahead, Madeline.
Hi there. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you. Please go ahead.
I apologize for being a bit of a broken record on this issue, but Chair, I'm wondering if there are any updates on the commission's planned internal review of the Sean Chu matter from when he was a constable with the CPS in the 90s and 2000s. I know the last time I had asked about this, I believe in November, I think you were waiting for some more information, but is there a timeline for that work and can you let me know whether any information will be public once the review is completed?
Yes, there, we've certainly been working on this. The Public Complaints Director has put forward recommendations in terms of steps that the commission within its purview will be looking into this and we expect that to take place over the next probably two to three months. And the report will come back to the commission and will in some format be made public. I don't know if there are, is anything separate from the police service, but that's what's coming from the commission.
Can you tell me a bit more about what that work will entail? Like just give some more details about what exactly you'll be reviewing and, and, and what's being looked at at this point? I know that, you know, an internal review has been called for and, and committed to, but I'm just wondering what kind of work will go into that? Like are there documents or what other kinds of things are being looked at?
We're getting more input on that later today, so unfortunately I don't have more detail for you. But I expect it will be quite wide-ranging and again, it will be limited to the areas of responsibility that the commission itself has. And if there's other things going on beyond that, it would be either the service or other places. But that, the commission will get more of a report in the next little while. And so I, I do believe that the timeline is expected in the next two to three months.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, so Madeline, if you are all done, we will now move on to Scott Dipple at CDC.
I have a question for Chief Newfeld. I trust you can hear me. Okay. Chief, can you give us a sense, I guess, in terms of the anti-racism work that's going on? Are you at the point now where you thought you would be when this process really got underway? Because it, you, you sort of portray the difficulty of, you know, essentially trying to fly the plane while you're working on it. So maybe you can give us a sense of, are you where you thought you would be at this point?
That's a great question, Scott. Thank you for that. You know, it's I guess here's what I would say. You know, when we made our commitment to anti-racism back in September of 2020, we knew there were some very tangible and, and, and sort of low-hanging fruit, if you will, things that we could do right away. We talked about body worn camera review. We talked about looking at street check policy, review of the SRO program, these types of things. But we knew that some more of the work was going to be iterative. And so as you know, we stood up the anti-racism committee, the external anti-racism committee. And so a lot of that was, I guess, iterative in terms of the work we did engaging with the public to determine what those next steps forward would be. So you know, some things have moved faster than I thought they would and I think some things have probably in fairness moved slower than I thought they would. But like I say, at the end of the day, there should be no doubt as to our commitment to this important work and we'll continue on, but I, but I think it's a bit of a mixed bag. I think some has, has probably progressed more quickly and some not as much. And, and you know, there are some things we heard here tonight where, you know, I wish we were able to deliver on some particular things that, you know, that, that really in context have been very difficult to deliver on. And so we're not meeting everybody's needs and expectations. There's no question about that. But I, but I am still very proud of the work that's gone on because there's been a real active and strong committed effort and that will continue. So a bit of a mixed bag. Thanks for the question, Scott.
All right. And just to follow up, Chief, you mentioned that you were aware that there are some people in the community that are not going to be happy with where things are at and you're not going fast enough. What's your message to them?
Well, again, we want to deliver on the commitments that we made, the things that we knew that we could do from the outset. And so again, that, you know, that's, that's sort of something that we've kept front and center and we've moved that forward. And I think with respect to, you know, some of the other portions of it, again, it's kind of an iterative approach, as I said, working with community. We have heard from the community and portions of it saying, you know, sort of nothing about us without us. They want to make sure that we're walking in lock, lockstep and so we really, we've heard and appreciate that. At the same time, there's understandably other portions of the community that are like, you know what, we've heard enough talk and we want to see action. And so it, it's about sort of figuring out which communities and which issues we walk quickly and which ones we might walk a little bit slower and, and trying to get that right. And I suppose that's probably more art than science right there. So what I would say to them is certainly be patient. What I would say to them is we remain completely committed. And again, we look forward to working with you. We want to work with you. And you know, this is a long journey that we're taking people on and it's something we're going to be committed to for a long time. And stick with us, stick with us. We're committed. Thanks.
Thank you. I have other questions for the chief, but I'll rejoin the queue.
Okay, thank you, Scott. We will circle back to you. Now we will go to Adam Toy to ask your questions.
Yeah, hi. Thanks for this today. Wanted to follow up on, on a, an item about fraudulent vaccination documents, a number of allegations and investigations. Wondering if, if there's any word of, if the, some of these fraudulent vaccination documentation is akin to what happened in Edmonton where there were reports of homeless people being paid to get vaccinated for individuals who can then get their QR codes.
Yeah, it's Deputy Chief Chad Toffick responding to your question there, Adam. Thanks for the question. No, it's not in relation to that type of allegations. I am aware of those ones that are occurring in Edmonton, given our work in the provincial committee there. They are more different just around actual fake or alleged fake documentation, not where someone has actually gone in and done that.
So they've been faked, they've been okay, great. Second question about COVID incidents among the, the, your members, service members there. Wondering if there's an update on, on percentage of COVID positive cases that are among fully vaccinated members? And does that near doubling of cases, is that leading to the possibility of changing of masking recommendations among the service?
Adam, it's Raj Gill here answering that question. So for your first question, we actually did, we actually did an analysis of all of our positive cases to see how many of those members were vaccinated versus how many were not. And it came out to 94% of our positive cases were members that had been fully vaccinated, which is the double backs and including the booster self. So, so that number is, it's reflective of what's happening in greater society in terms of there is fully vaccinated people that are testing positive for COVID. So our number is not any different than the greater society in terms of, and you'll have to remind me what your second question was.
Yeah, just wondering if, if seeing how rapidly Omicron spreads, if there's any thought of changing masking recommendations for service members, something akin to an N95, KN95 mask.
So we continue to follow the orders of the Chief Medical Officer Health of Alberta and we, in addition to that, our occupational safety officers are examining every time we have a COVID positive case through our incident management team on our health nurse to see if there's any prevention efforts we could take in those environments. So that work is continuous and ongoing and it's a case by case basis. But from a, from a following in directions perspective, we follow the same directions that are provided by the Chief Medical Officer Health.
All right, thanks. I'll jump back in the queue. I've got a couple more questions, but thank you so much.
Hey, thank you, Adam. We will now move to Jason Harry to ask your questions.
Hi there. This is a question most likely for Deputy Chief Toffick. I, I think you mentioned during your report that police are looking into charges potentially related to those, those protests at the homes of politicians. Just wondering if you can expand on that?
You bet, Jason. Sorry, we're getting feedback there, but thanks for the question. Yes, we are attending the locations and interviewing witnesses, et cetera, looking at all the evidence, both electronic and, and statements from the public around what transpired at the locations to determine if anything that happened there would broach criminal or other sanctions. Depending on what a person does in relation to a residence there may determine whether or not there could be criminal charges contemplated. Of course, we have to work closely with the Crown Prosecutions around that because there's certain elements of law that you'd have to prove. So those are the steps that we're going through right now and not to compromise kind of where those investigations are at. We'll let those play its course.
Hi Jason, I muted you to stop the echo, so if you have any
Hi, Jason. I muted you to stop the echoes. If you have any follow-up, please do unmute and let us know.
Yep, sorry about that. Don't know why I'd have a feedback at home here. Thanks for the response. There's a follow-up. Chief Newfeld, I'm wondering if, if you'd like to remark maybe on, you know, your thoughts about these protests that we're seeing. You know, repeatedly over the last several weeks here.
Thanks, Jason. Are you referring to the ones specifically at the homes of elected officials and others?
Yeah, that's right.
Okay, yeah, I, I guess what I would say about that is I've sort of publicly in other forums called on the organizers to give a rethink to the tactic of going to people's homes. And I, I think similar to what they did when it came to going to hospitals. You know, I, I just think it becomes very personal. It's one thing to say we're going there and it's a, it's a, you know, it's a peaceful protest, but I think, you know, when I see people in masks concealing their identity and I see some of the the, the signs and, and banners and that type of thing that have been there and, and what they say. I actually think it's, it is very intimidating. So I think the context really matters. And I think when you think about people being at home, the place they go for, for you know, respite and, and they've got families and kids and parents, and it, it's just, it's just not a great look. And so again, I've called on them to do that. I, I've said also that with our folks, we're going to look at all of these things, all of these protests. And if there are opportunities there, if the law has been broken and there's opportunities to lay charges, we certainly will. I, I would love to see people move back to public spaces where, you know, you can protest your, your, you know, your lack of agreement with the government's decisions at whatever level. But I, I think people's home should be off limits.
Thanks for this.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Jason. We'll go back to you, Scott. If any other media who are on the line do have a question, please just put your hand up, and then we will allow you to ask questions or any follow-ups after Scott's.
Chief, just picking up on one of the things that, that Councillor Walcott asked you. I wonder if you see a need for the, the present testing regime to continue as is, given the supply of tests that CPS was able to obtain from the provincial government? Or do you see at the point in March, I guess, or the end of March, CPS coming more in line with the city's policy?
Oh, you know, I think this is a rapidly evolving environment, as you know. Omicron came quickly and, and thankfully, it appears, touch wood, maybe peaked quickly. Now, today on my way to work, I heard about another potential variant and this type of thing. So rapidly evolving environment. You know, I think the councillor rightly pointed out that, you know, the end of March will come quickly, but I think there's a lot happening day to day. So at this point, I don't know. But I think as Deputy Gill says, we've continued to monitor this on a, you know, a daily or twice daily basis. And we'll continue to assess what's best for the organization and the public, and we'll move in that direction. Thanks.
All right. And, and just to follow up, Chief, is there any sort of commentary that you can provide on the disciplinary process for those who are refusing to get vaccinated, refusing to do the testing? Just give us a sense of the, the process involved in the timeframes, I guess, before you reach conclusions on those. Or you're designate.
Scott, it's a designate. It's Raj Gill answer that question. So again, we, we have cases that involve both sworn members and civilian members. So each of those employees had different collective agreements, and they fall under different processes. So for sworn members, there is a police act. And under the, for the civilian members, they're under a different a different disciplinary regime through their collective agreements and through the city of Calgary. So so we have to follow different processes depending on the employee, and we're following what's, what's outlined in the, either the province, the police act, which is a provincial statute. Or the collective agreements and the disciplinary process of the city of Calgary.
Guess I might add, I might add therefore to Scott, I don't think we have anybody in Raj, just give me a nod if I'm wrong, but I don't think we have anybody on the sworn side that's in the disciplinary process. We had a couple of resignations as Deputy Gill mentioned earlier. But on the sworn side, we got either fully vaccinated or compliant.
Okay.
No, thank you.
Perfect. We will move to you next, Madeline.
Hi again. I just wanted to quickly clarify the Omicron situation as well. So it was mentioned that the number of officers and employees that are currently off sick or isolating are it's lower than, than a peak that, that you reached a bit earlier. So I'm, I'm wondering if, if we can clarify what the highest number was, as well as what effects you've seen across the service as, as these absences have, have been occurring? Like, are there any specific areas of CPS that have been hit hard by this or, or service that that was particularly affected by all the people that have been off sick?
Thanks, Madeline. Great question. So I, I'm kind of going from memory because I've spoken about this on different media outlets at different points in, in this particular wave. But I think the highest number that we had was about a hundred, roughly a hundred cases of COVID positive. And then about another fifty of people who at the time were displaying symptoms and then self-isolating, but who had not been tested for COVID. So I think the net impact at, at its worst was about a hundred and fifty employees that's sworn and civilian. I think on average, it's probably been, been about an eighty-twenty split between sworn and civilian. So in terms of the locations across the service, they've kind of been everywhere. So there is, there's been little pockets at times where there's been transmission sort of at work. But for the most part, it's been spread out across the service. The, the most challenging impact, of course, has been at the frontline. Obviously, we've got some staffing shortages that we're experiencing at the frontline in any event. And so on top of it, when we lose people on the frontline, it can actually make it very difficult. And the challenge there is because we run multiple shifts a day across the city. If somebody gets COVID, you know, we talked earlier today, but the number of people that we put out in the morning into the city might actually change throughout the day because somebody comes down sick or, or has an exposure. So it's just been a lot of logistics to keep on top of it. We've sort of taken the approach that we would provide, I think Deputy Gill referred to, we've got, had an extra sort of team of people who were out on day shift and on night shift, so that in anticipation of impacts to staffing, they were, they would be extra and deployable. And so that's how we've sort of managed through the worst of it. And again, like I say, I'm sort of hopeful that we've seen a plateauing now. And so when we're talking about numbers now around sixty-ish total, that's a significant decline from the one fifty that we'd seen before. So it's heading in a good direction, and I'm, I'm, I'm hopeful that it continues in that direction.
Okay, and just my final follow-up is, so will we be seeing the impact of that in terms of increased overtime pay or, or anything like that? Or, or has it been just a matter of moving things around logistically?
I think primarily we, we will use overtime if we have to, of course. But for the most part, I think the, the incident management team and the group that's been working on that has been dealing with the logistics to make sure there's extra bodies out there as frequently as they can. But of course, there's impacts. I think the, the larger impacts would be taking people from other areas of the service. Whether it be, you know, community-oriented activities or CROs, the Community Resource Officers, or folks that are actually assigned normally to investigative areas. You know, and take them away from those duties. And again, as you've heard tonight, in areas like Staff Sergeant Michelle's area, Doyle's area. You know, there is high case loads there as well. So there's impacts when this happens. But again, I think logistically, it's been managed here for the last little while quite effectively.
Thank you.
Thanks, Madeline.
Thank you, Madeline. Jason, you still have your hand up. I'll, I'll let you unmute in case you have another question.
Yeah, I just never lowered my hand. Thanks.
Okay, perfect. And we will now go to Scott and Adam, and then after that, we will have to end the media availability, just in the interest of time. So Scott, I will let you unmute now.
Again, just a quick question and clarification, and that was the, the figure of $2 million was mentioned as the cost of policing the demonstrations. What was the timeframe on that? Was that for the calendar year 2021? Or is that since the start of the pandemic?
Sorry, that was the cost for 2021.
Okay, thanks very much.
All right, thank you, Scott and Adam for the last question.
Yeah, thanks so much. Just had a, a quick news of the day sort of question for the chief, and you'll pardon my naivety about the matter. As I can't recall the last time I attended one. But today, the provincial government said that they're going to be putting a three- to four-month pause on Phase Two of their Safe Roads Initiative. I'm just wondering if that slash when that goes forward, will that impact the CPS staffing availability or, 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 yeah, I'm just wondering how that will affect CPS staffing and, and levels if at all?
Sure.
Hi, hi, Adam. It's Deputy Chief Chad Toffick responding here. Yeah, with the announcement from the provincial government on Phase Two for the Safe Road system there, it really doesn't have an impact on staffing. We've been gearing up to go live next week as per all police agencies in Alberta with the changes that the government was imposing, which includes technology and training and everything else that comes along with it. So we were prepared accordingly, but with the delay, we'll just have to wait and see how that goes and go from there.
Okay, thank you.
Perfect. Well, thank you everyone very much. That concludes our media availability. And so I will now end the meeting, and we can head on over to the remainder of the media meeting for the commissioners. Thank you all for attending today.